Process of examination.
To agitate it with all the time. And I just keep saying, thank goodness, it's just water.
I feel like a piker.
Grow up, Mike.
Someone better strap Alda thin.
I can't compete.
Hey, I got 50.
Let Steve know when you're ready to go because he has to let Matt know.
Yeah, so then they get to come online and only come for a couple of hours.
Yeah, that's great.
They're gonna be here?
Don't you recognize?
In spirit.
You'll love it.
All right, we're ready. I'll have you all introduce yourselves. All set? Good morning. I'm going to call to order the Connecticut State Board of Education impartial hearing on the Killenly matter. My name is Erin Benham, Vice Chair of the State Board of Education. And I'll let my colleagues introduce themselves.
My name is Donald Harris. I'm a member of the State Board.
Good morning, everyone. I'm a member of the State Board of Education.
Alan Taylor, also a member.
And then I'll start with the introductions from the attorneys.
I'm Attorney Andrew Feinstein, representing the concerned citizens, parents of Killenly students. The intervenor in this matter.
I'm Michael McCain, I'm the Director of Legal and Governmental Affairs at the State Department of Education.
Good morning, I'm Pat Noonan. I'm representing the Killenly Board of Education.
And remotely is joining us Assistant Attorney General Darren Cunningham. Darren, I wasn't sure if you wanted to say anything.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. Attorney Feinstein will turn it over to you.
The witness this morning is Kathleen Ogilvy. And call her to the stand now, but.
Now, you can take a seat and we'll have her sworn in.
Thank you.
Are you guys swearing?
Would you like?
Yes, please.
Ms. Ogilvy, would you please raise your right hand? Do you so swear or affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence and testimony you shall present in this hearing will be the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth will help you God earn your pains and penalties and hurt you.
I do.
You are so sworn, just for the record, would you please state and spell your name?
Yes, it's Caitlin Ogilvy.
Thank you very much. Before beginning my questioning, I just wanted to inform the board that there have been some very significant developments in the last few weeks in relationship to this matter. Before beginning questioning, I just wanted to inform the panel that there have been some very significant developments over the last couple of weeks in relationship to this. Some of this will come out in the testimony. We thought it was very important that Ms. Ogilvy, who is the Service Director of Community Health Resources, appeared today to present, to let the panel and let the people in Killenly know exactly what's been going on and what services are being provided. And so we're going to go through that, but I am extremely hopeful that between, that shortly after the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to reach some sort of resolution which we'll present to the panel thereafter. Okay? Good morning.
Good morning.
I see from your LinkedIn page that you've been the Service Director of Community Health Resources since January of this year? Is that correct?
Yes.
What is the job of the Service Director?
So I provide oversight operationally, clinically, of four different programs. So I oversee the child outpatient programs, the school-based therapy programs, C-Kin, which is a program that provides foster care support for kinship families, and the parental support systems.
And is that, those four areas, that's the entire universe of what Community Health Resources provides?
No, I oversee just a small portion of the Child and Family Division of CHR.
Okay. Now, you're a licensed clinical social worker, correct?
Correct.
Do you provide any direct services?
Not at this time.
And so you haven't, you've not provided any direct services to students in Killenly schools, correct?
I have not.
So what is Community Health Resources?
Community Health Resources is a large nonprofit that provides behavioral health and substance abuse services. Over north central and the eastern portion of the state, we provide care, integrated care for a variety of ages stemming from two years old all the way up through, you know, geriatric ages. And in those services, we do substance abuse support, mental health intervention. And some of that is in office or in the community. We also have a number of residential programs as well, and we have clinicians stationed at the DOC.
Thank you. Do you operate school-based health centers?
We currently have co-locations for staff who are in the schools. So in terms of CHR, we have co-locations versus school-based health centers at this point in time.
Okay, can you explain the distinction?
Yes, so a school-based health center is a very distinct, it's usually overseen through, and have a licensing through DPH or the Department of Children and Families. There is funding usually attached from the state to provide the services at little to no cost to families. And they can have a variety of different ways. So a school-based health center can have dental, medical, and behavioral health, or one, it can all be all three, or it can have one or two of those options.
Just to be clear, CHR does not provide school-based health centers?
So currently, we do not. We did receive one grant to start one.
But not in Killenly?
Not in Killenly.
Okay. Well, how does what you're providing in Killenly differ from a school-based health center?
So for school-based health versus what we're currently doing, the difference is that we, just like school-based health, we bill insurances, but we still have to collect co-pays. It doesn't come at no cost to the family. Otherwise, they're pretty much the same.
Except for licensing and things like that?
So our license will be through Department of Children and Families, which can also be through a school-based health.
So how many staff does CHR overall have?
Can you repeat the question?
How many staff members does CHR overall have?
As an entire agency, about 900 plus.
Okay, and how many of them are clinicians?
I don't know.
Okay, no problem. Let's move to Killenly specifically. Were you involved in the negotiation of the contract with Killenly Public Schools?
I was not.
You know, what do you know about the process leading up to the May 20, of 2023 contract?
I was not at the organization at that time and was not part of those discussions. So anything I have to say would be historical information provided by a third party.
That's right, okay. Does CHR provide similar services to other school districts?
We do.
Can you talk about where those are?
Yep, we are currently located in Thompson. We are located in Crick Schools. We are located in Manchester Public Schools, a variety of the Windsor Schools, and Granby, Suffield. There's quite a few schools that we co-locate with.
And by co-locate, you mean that you have an office and clinicians who provide services to students there?
Correct.
And essentially, it's a doctor's office within the school, correct?
A therapist office.
A therapist office within the school. So you were not, you were not involved in the initial process in September of '23 when CHR started to provide services?
I was not.
Okay. We've had previous testimony that the Killenly school staff identified certain students as they believed were in need of, or could use services that CHR were providing. Is that your understanding as well?
Currently, the district, the teachers, school personnel, if they identify a student, will coordinate with that family to see if they're interested in services and then will connect with us.
Let's take that apart a little bit. They're the, the Killenly school staff is the one that seeks consent to, for the students to see you?
The current process is that, and a family can also self-identify, but we received the referrals directly from Killenly at this time.
But the, okay, so before somebody can, before students receive services, the parents have to sign some form of consent, is that correct?
If they go directly through the school to access services, yes, they will sign a consent form because the school will be sending information, just demographic insurance information, so we can start that process on our end.
And it's the school that seeks that consent, not you?
Correct, because they're sending us information that would be a violation of rights.
And you first became involved in Killenly in January of this year, is that right?
I became involved in Killenly in February.
February. At that point, how many students from Killenly were receiving CHR services?
I do not recall the certain number at that point in time.
Do you know the number at this point in time?
I do.
And what's that number?
So we have 29 active clients in KIS and 15 active clients in the high school. So KIS, which is the intermediate school, and then we have 15, so that's 29 in the intermediate school and then 15 in the high school.
Is it true that that number today is larger than the number it was in February?
Yes.
Is it substantially larger?
I don't recall.
Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry.
Now, we've had prior testimony that of the families contacted as identified as a student perhaps needing services, that some proportion, around 50%, actually signed up. Do you have any knowledge about the identification and sign-up rates of students?
Without calculating the numbers, I don't know offhand. Students that typically have declined our services, did not respond to our outreach attempts, or had another service already in place, so that would be a duplication of services.
Talk about your outreach efforts, what were those?
We attempt to outreach the families three to four times. So we make, our triage center right now is making three phone calls to the families, and then our care coordinator is doing a fourth follow-up.
And who, who are these students who you're calling? Are these the ones identified by Killenly as students that need a services?
Yes.
And are you, how often do you, talk about the process of getting referrals of students' names like that, is that? She didn't talk about providing service to geriatrics, Alan. On a regular basis, does the Killenly school staff send you the names of students to outreach to?
Yes, they send it with the referral and the consent form. So they have spoken with the families prior to sending us the referrals.
So you already have the consent form and then you reach out and the family does not make contact?
Correct.
Okay.
It happens.
Okay, so, but the number who, that Killenly reaches out to that refuses consent, that's, you have no idea what that, what that number would be?
I don't know.
Let me, let me just be clear. What's the nature of the service that you're providing to an individual Killenly student?
So we're providing individual therapy. We also can provide family therapy and group therapy to students. Right now, a majority of our cases are individual and family therapy. Our staff are trained in a variety of evidence-based models. So the current staff that are providing services are providing modular approach for treatment with children, which focuses in on anxiety, depression, trauma, and conduct. We are also providing TFCBT, which is Trauma-Focused Cognitive Behavioral Therapy, and AESPRT, which is a substance abuse model.
And the modality for that, for individual therapy?
Individual and family.
Okay, and for individual therapy, the therapist is working with the individual student. How long is each session?
That depends on the student's needs. That could be 30 minutes or it could be 45 minutes, which is the clinical hour.
And how often would a student come in for that therapy?
That also is clinically determined. It could be weekly, it could be bi-weekly. Most students come weekly.
So you have... I'm sorry, I'm not sure I had got the numbers here correctly. Did you have 29 in KIS?
29 active students in KIS, yes.
And students coming in for, weekly for a half hour to 45 minutes?
Correct.
How much does the person in KIS work?
Currently, we have two clinicians stationed at KIS. One clinician is there for one full school day. The other clinician is there, sorry, I misspoke, because we have actually three that come into the building for KIS. We have one person, clinician that's there on Mondays. We have another clinician who's there two days, and then one of our fee-for-service providers comes in and provides services, like a partial day on Wednesdays.
How many students can a, how many students can clinicians see in a day?
So a clinician can see, depending on how long each session is, it can be up eight is usually what we strive for in a clinical day. But that can also move, if they're doing half-hour sessions, because that's what clinically indicated, it could be more. So in a school-based position, we tend to say schedule eight to 10 kids per day because of the fact that there's times people have tests, they have a variety of different things that they may not be able to be pulled from and to provide, or someone calls out if they have a scheduled appointment, you know, they don't come to school that day. So it's making sure that we're still able to see a number of students.
Okay. Is there, is there any current excess capacity? I mean, can you take more students at this point?
We can take more students.
You can, with the current staffing?
Right now, we have capacity to take more students.
Okay, I'm not going to challenge you on the math there, but it doesn't sound, but it sounds pretty tight. Are you, are you seeing students that are not referred by the Killenly school staff?
A majority of our students currently are being, that we're seeing in the school have been referred by the staff. We have had some students who have called our triage center and are receiving services either through our Will Mantic site or Danielson Clinic, or, yeah, those two locations mostly.
But not, not in the Killenly school system?
They could, it's up to, it's up to the family.
Okay. And your triage center, is your central office, is that correct?
Our triage center is care coordinators who answer the phone call for every single person who's seeking services. They take information and will, and make sure that people get assigned to intakes in the appropriate space.
Okay, so if a Killenly parent calls into the triage center and asks to have services within Killenly schools, that's something you can provide?
They could. Our Killenly clinicians that are currently stationed have an intake block in their schedule for Killenly students. And so if someone were to call and say, I would like to be, my child to be seen at the Killenly school, as long as they're in that school that the clinician's in. So we can't have a memorial student calling and seeing someone in the high school, right? That's, it's, that's not how, you know, it needs to be in their designated school. So if a Killenly High School student parent called our triage lines that I want my child seen, the triage center would look for an intake in the Killenly schedule.
Okay, and are there students being seen that way now?
I, what I've mostly heard is Killenly Memorial students calling at this point, so I can't say for sure. I'd say no.
So let's go over the actual staffing. Who are the staff members and what hours do they work in what schools? Could, can you?
So we have three clinicians who are currently working with Killenly schools. We have Meg Ryan, who's an LMSW. She is at KIS on, I believe it's Tuesdays and Thursdays, and in the high school on Monday. And they're supposed to be, their scheduled hours are to be there while the school is open with the ability to stay after school. Jared is at KIS, Jared Ripley, LMSW, is at KIS on Mondays. And then Azra Lupacino, who's an LPC, goes to the high school and middle school on Wednesday and splits her time there.
You said middle school, is that different than KIS?
Sorry, KIS.
And would I, would I be accurate to say that once a student starts building a therapeutic relationship with one therapist, they stay with that same therapist?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And for how long has this current staffing configuration existed?
Meg Ryan has been stationed in the school since September. I am not clear as to when Jared started because I think that was before I started, so I can't give you a date on that. And then Azra started in April, taking on cases.
And did I hear you to say that Azra is a sort of fee-for-service, not a employee, is it?
She's a fee-for-service employee.
What does that mean? What's the difference?
So what that means is that we have a contract with Azra to, and she can take on cases. She can say, I would like this many cases or clients to work with, and we provide that, those clients. And so instead of being a salaried employee, she gets paid by session.
What kind of publicity is there for your services, that's, for parents and students of Killenly schools?
Currently, we are on the school's website, an informational page. Obviously, we have a station at this age school. I knew from, again, this would be third-party information, as I know that, I was informed that people historically have gone to open house nights.
You're not distributing flyers at this point, correct?
Not at this time.
And you're not taking ads in the shopper as others have?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet.
What does "not yet" mean?
So we have, "not yet" means that we have been in discussion about making sure that we get information and flyers out to the families that, in working with the district to disperse those, that information more consistently and getting it, you know, making sure they have the materials they can disperse. We are also talking about, again, being at open house nights and being available to families to meet us. Some of the other strategies that we're talking about, like deploying this year, would be going into like farmer's markets and other like things that are happening within the community to have them get to know us.
Is there an actual plan for increased publicity? You say there's discussions going on?
There is a plan. So the, so the plan is our marketing materials will be dispersed to families. The plan is to go into things like farmer's markets and other community events so that families can meet us. The plan is to go into different school events to make sure that we're available and that families can also get to know us and ask us questions and decide if they want to engage us.
And what's the schedule for the implementation of this plan?
So this summer, typically farmer's markets happen this summer, so we'll be looking at trying to get a table. We will obviously be working with the district to get the dates for open houses. And then, you know, it's revamping our, what we currently have for like marketing materials to reflect changes so that the families have the most up-to-date information.
What are your plans, your contract runs on a school-year basis, correct? CHR's contract with Killenly runs on a school-year basis?
Our contract actually is, it's a fiscal year.
Fiscal year?
That's my understanding.
Okay. For next year, starting in September, what are you looking at for both staffing and publicity?
So for next September, we are looking at 2.5 FTEs. One FTE at the high school, one FTE at the intermediate school, and 8.5 in FTE at the memorial school. So expanding into Killenly Memorial and providing services there.
Go that, go over that again, 2.5 at the high school?
No, one FTE at the high school.
Okay.
One FTE at the intermediate school, and a 0.5 FTE in the memorial school.
Okay.
Yes, so part of the 0.5, and what we are looking at potentially is having a supervisor who would have a half caseload and be able to provide supervision to the two staff members at Killenly and continue. Yes. Yeah, so the point, yes. So 0.5 in the sense of being able to provide this therapy. Sorry.
And in terms of the one full-time equivalent at the high school?
Yes.
Does that translate to one person who's there five days a week?
It does.
And the one, the same person there five days a week?
The same person.
And that would be true for the intermediate school as well?
Correct.
And the half, the half a person at the memorial school would be that same?
The half person will be there 40 hours, but half time seeing clients and students. So 40, 40 hours a week.
But?
No, so 40 hour, there'll be a full-time employee, 40 hours. Half of their, half of their time, so 20 hours will be dedicated to students.
And what's, what's the supervisory role?
The supervisor role is to provide clinical consultation and oversight of the students and making sure that we are helping them reach their goals, that we are making clinically sound decisions. Every clinician needs a supervisor to, you know, just bounce things off of, provide documentation review, and also to continue to coordinate with the schools.
And who's supervisor right now?
I'm currently covering as the supervisor.
Okay. And so you would not be if this plan goes into effect?
I would not.
Now, you have, you have space provided by Killenly in both the high school and the intermediate school, right?
We do.
What does it say on the door?
On the intermediate door, it says. On the intermediate door, it says CHR.
And the high school door?
I have not seen the high school door yet.
Okay. Can a student at the intermediate school go and knock on the door and say, I want to see somebody?
They can knock on the door and say they would like to see somebody.
And what happens then?
There would be a conversation with the student.
Then what would be the nature of that conversation?
So the conversation would be, do your caregivers know that you are seeking services? And depending on what the student said, if the student's.
Excuse me. Your, do your parents know if you're seeking?
Or, or caregivers. We would want to ask, like, that you're seeking services. So if the child says, no, we need to do our due diligence in speaking with our compliance officer and, and speaking with the student to get, to see if there's clinical rationale of seeing the student without parental consent. Right? So we do follow the law around this. So a minor can seek services without parental knowledge. However, there needs to be a clinical rationale that not getting the service would do harm or including the caregiver would do harm. Most times in these situations, the caregiver can be involved, and it's working with the child to be able to get the caregiver involved. If for some reason we couldn't in that situation, what we do, according to the law, is provide six sessions. And at that time, we're always evaluating to make sure that, is it, can we continue seeing the student without involving their caregivers? If the answer is no, we're working with the student to bring the caregivers in and notifying them and getting consent. If the answer is still yes, but again, we're doing this in conjunction. This is not just a clinician who's making this decision. It's the supervisor, myself would be involved, our compliance officer. You know, we want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence in allowing access, but also not doing something that would be against the law. So that could be, it depends on how often that child is being seen. So it could be six weeks if they're being seen weekly. It could be 12 weeks if they're being seen bi-weekly. But the goal here is, according to the law, is that we provide those six sessions if it's clinically determined that not seeing the child or involving the caregiver would be a potential risk.
Has the situat, has that situation come up yet?
No.
Okay. But that protocol is clearly established as, as how you're going to do it if that situation does come up?
Yes, we will follow the law and our policies and procedures.
So if you don't have parental involvement or knowledge, who do you bill?
That is part of the issue. In that kind of situation, the child needs to be aware that in order for us to bill services, their parent will become aware. So that's part of the conversation. So in that case, and honestly, I think I've seen this once in my, my entire career.
But not in Killenly?
Not in Killenly. Typically, students, they're assuming financial responsibility. So at that point, because they're signing all of our documentation, they're signing consent to treat, the financial agreement. Can there be set a sliding scale? Of course there can be. That is part of what we do as clinicians in an, in an agency. But in order to bill insurance, their parents will get that, that EOB and be aware. We are a CCBHC, which is a certified community behavioral health clinic.
What happens if a family doesn't have insurance?
If a family doesn't have insurance, we work with the family to be able to set a sliding scale fee to make sure that they can afford the services.
And that would be the same with a student whose caretakers didn't, weren't aware?
My understanding is that CHR bills Husky or private insurance for services provided, correct?
Correct.
Does CHR ever bill parents for services or any part of services provided in Killenly Schools?
Yes.
Explain what the situation.
We will send bills for copays. We send bills for co-insurance and deductibles. And if the family cannot pay them, we try to set a sliding scale fee. Or, you know, right now, there's access for families who are in financial strain. There's a lot of families that, in general, in the state of Connecticut right now, that are fall into this category where insurance is very expensive, high deductible, and they can't afford, actually afford the co-insurance or the high deductible plans. So right now, Carillon has the ability, there's funds available that we can apply for to be able to help families pay those, those bills.
Okay. And if you were a school-based health center, presumably you would not bill for any of that, correct?
Correct. It's typically no cost to families.
Okay. If you know, do the reimbursements provided by Husky cover CHR's costs in providing these services?
Currently, the rates for Medicaid, based on the recent rate analysis and research that was done, is that Connecticut is one of the lowest paid in this area for Medicaid, and that's being worked on at the state level. However, no, I mean Husky is not going to cover all the cost.
I just want to correct you to say that it's not one of the lowest. It is the lowest.
It is the lowest, yes.
Yeah. Other than private insurance and Husky reimbursements, does CHR receive any other funding to cover the cost of its services in Killenly Schools? And this, that's a question up till now?
No.
No. For next year, is there a plan for Killenly to provide support for CHR to provide services?
Yes.
Without disclosing anything that remains confidential, could you tell us what you know about that?
This process is brand new. We, so it's as of Wednesday evening determined by their Board of Ed. So we are still working out the details of those contracts.
But though, what? Your understanding of what was agreed upon Wednesday night was that there would be money from Killenly Board of Education to you to expand your services. Is that correct?
Correct.
And up till now?
Could I just ask one, so on Wednesday's board meeting, the board voted to fund the services?
On Wednesday's board meeting, they went to executive session. When they came out of executive session, there was a motion that passed unanimously that authorized the chairwoman of the board to create an offer that would resolve this 10-4B complaint under the terms discussed in the executive session. That was then adopted unanimously, and that's all.
That answers my question. Thank you.
That's all I know at this point. Were you at that board meeting?
I was not.
Okay. Right now, up till now, the only, what, you do get free grant and utilities from Killenly Board of Education, correct?
Yes, we do.
And no, and no other economic support from Killenly Board of Education?
No.
Okay. So what provisions does CHR have to continue providing services to students you're treating over the summer?
So we will be providing services in a variety of different ways, depending on what the family's needs are. So we can offer telehealth sessions for families if that is agreeable. We have capacity to be seeing the students in the schools. The schools are open over the summer, so we will be accessing our offices there. For families that want to come to Willamantic, we can also see them in our Willamantic office. Or for Danielson families, we can see them in our Danielson clinic. But the school is allowing us to use their space over the, use the space over the summer so we can continue and have continuity of care. And so those students will have access to us.
And is that the case that most students you're now providing services to will continue to get services over the summer?
Yes, they will.
You mentioned family therapy. How much of that are you doing?
So I would say right now, it's, it's minimal. We can always attempt to engage families, zoom them in. But I think having school-based services in the nature, the nature of school-based services is that oftentimes families are not able to get their child somewhere. So we do a lot of outreach to families. There might be a lot of phone conversations with the caregivers, Zoom sessions, but it's, in a school-based setting, it can be very challenging to have those family sessions that we would like to have.
So let, let me ask about confidentiality of information.
Yes.
I presume you were, you follow the same normal therapeutic rules of respect for, for patient-clinician confidentiality?
Correct.
And you do not share information with families unless it's authorized by the student, by the student, is that correct?
If the student is a minor, the family still has to access to certain amounts of information. So we'll talk with families about treatment planning. If the parent is involved in the session, obviously they're going to know what was happening in that session. But yes, there is confidentiality, but we, one of the things we always talk with students about because the parent needs to sign our treatment plans, is that the parents are always going to know what they're working on. Will the caregiver always know everything they're saying in our sessions? No. There's that, that's where the confidentiality comes in, unless there's something that's being disclosed, like abuse, neglect, suicidal ideation, homicidal ideation, anything that would put the child at risk.
And your clinicians are mandated reporters, are they not?
They are.
Okay. What protocol do you have for sharing information with school staff?
We need a signed release from the caregiver about, and there's discussions around what we're sharing. So the family needs to be in agreement with what we're talking with the school about. Clearly, the school needs to know that the child is being seen by us because they need to be able to produce passes, which is also why we have that consent right out the gate from the families that is signed so that the student can get passes. So people know that they're seeing CHR, but there's still confidentiality of those sessions. And we can talk, you know, the family has control over what is shared with the school.
What's the relationship generally between your clinicians and school-based mental health staff?
Very positive.
And I presume there are students who you are providing services to who are also talking to school guidance counselors and school social workers and the like?
I'm sure.
But there's a?
I'm, I, I said, I'm, yes.
But there's no sharing of, the sharing of information is based on what's consented to be shared?
Correct. We need consent to share information.
Now, has CHR done anything to assess overall mental health needs in Killenly Schools?
We have reviewed the reports that came from CIRAC.
But really, not, no independent assessment as to what kind of level of, of, of demand there might totally be for your services, correct?
We haven't done like a focus group or a poll or anything like that to see what families.
Okay. And is it the case that once your services are widely publicized, and open houses and farmers markets and through flyers, you're likely to see increased demand?
I expect so.
And you have no idea what level that demand's going to be, right? Okay, recently CHR applied for a grant or grants to expand services in Killenly Schools.
We did.
We did. None of those grants were approved, correct?
No, they were not.
Do you have any information whatsoever as to why those grants were not approved for you?
I do not.
I understand you're trying to get that information, is that correct?
I would love to know. But the, the information we received from SBHA was that it was a very competitive process and that we did not receive the awards.
And can CHR expand its mental health services in Killenly without additional funding?
The additional funding, so with our current structure, which is why we were seeking the additional funding and why this, this new setup would, is so important, is that we would like to be able to expand. But right now, today, the staff that are going into Killenly Public Schools are Willamantic child outpatient clinicians who have Willamantic caseloads. So anytime we transition time from the clinic, that means that there's less access to, to individuals calling through there. So having this additional funding allows us to have staff dedicated solely to Killenly and meeting its needs, but also make sure we have the appropriate staffing for our Willamantic office.
Okay, let's talk about staffing. You're talking about two and a half, well, three people. Are you going to have any problem finding those people?
I don't believe so.
Is that because you already have these people?
We have staff that have indicated they'd be interested in these positions.
Okay. Can you explain what was in the grant proposal, the grant proposal or proposals that were denied?
So in that information, they ask standard questions about CHR, who we are, the populations we serve, around our evidence-based models that we use. We put in all that information. We put in information about the, the needs of the area. So why Killenly essentially? So looking at, we used information from United Way, looking at, you know, access to services, and not just access in the sense are the services, are there actual physical buildings, but do families, can families actually get to those services? So we used a lot of information from the United Way around their Alice project. So it was looking really just showing and poverty levels. So looking at, you know, information about Killenly itself and providing that as to why this would actually benefit the students.
You asked for $75,000, is that correct?
No. We asked, oh, it was over $100,000 per school that we had asked for.
Over $100,000 per school?
Correct.
And what was that money going to be used for?
It was over a two-year period of time. It was to expand services.
More precisely, what would the money be used for?
It'd be used for one FTE at the high school, one FTE at the Killenly Intermediate School, and a 8.5, or one full, actually one full, Killenly Memorial. So we use the United Way information and, and some of the census information, CIRAC's information to support the need. We didn't go into our specific student, like, we used STEM of it in a sense of like high levels of depression, high levels of anxiety, very general because we don't want to identify. But it was, it was really to show, demonstrate the need.
Well, you said that the money was for, for staff, but isn't most of the staff or all of the staff cost paid for by Husky or private insurance?
No. No. So Husky, I mean, a third party, you know, third-party revenue is only going to cover a portion of, of the cost of having a staff member. Because remember, we're employing people full-time, so they need medical benefits, vision, like, they need PTO. And so all of that gets, you know, factored in with fringe and A and G when we're determining a budget. So that, when we did our budgeting for the SBHA, that's all, we looked at what would it cost to put the agency, you know, to put full-time people into these positions. And that SBHA loan was from June of 2024 through June of 2026, so it was a two-year, or I keep saying one grant.
Okay. On April 10th, CHR made a presentation to the Killenly Board of Education.
Correct.
That was you, right?
That was me.
Yeah. The presentation stated, quote, "Staff has seen a great need from the students, so this application would be to specifically expand services so that we can provide full-time staff members at the high school, intermediate school, and possibly Memorial. There are a high number of acute children." What does that mean?
So acute means that kids who are going into crisis. So whether it's they're engaging in self-harm behaviors, are using substances. There are a number of students that we're currently serving where there's, they're engaging in those things. They may sometimes actually leave us to go to a higher level of care. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, can you repeat that last sentence to get that?
So essentially what I'm saying is there, what we're seeing from some of the students is there's what we call level of acuity. So acuity means like how, what's, how high are their needs in terms of their mental health? So we have students who are engaging in self-harm behaviors, who may be using substances, you know, and are, or expressing high suicidal ideation that we're constantly working with to, to provide impromptu services, safety planning, and maybe referring to higher levels of care because they need something outside of just once a week outpatient therapy.
And your statement that there's a high number of acute children, that was based on the children that you're seeing in, on the children that you're seeing in, in Killingley, is that correct?
It's, it's actually not just Killingley, it's, it's the state, it's nationally, we're seeing high levels of acuity in, in, in children.
Okay. And does CHR provide services to students who are not characterized as acute?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's all I have at the moment. Thank you very much.
Is this a couple of questions I have?
I also have old ears, like my colleague.
Me too.
At the end of the row. But you, you talked about providing individual, family, and group therapy. Is there a working definition of a group, two to six to eight?
Yep, so typically in group therapy, what we'd like to see is a minimum of four or five, because if a child's out, you know, if there's something happening where they can't be pulled, we wanna make sure there's still enough people within the group. And then also with insurance regulations, you can't have more than 12. So typically a group, what we really are aiming for is like four or five to up to 12.
Is that for that same half an hour or 45-minute time slot?
So in order to bill for a group in the state of Connecticut, you have to have a minimum of 45 minutes in that group.
Okay. I also heard, I think I heard, that you are currently on a school year contract?
No, our, I'm, I understood our contract being like fiscal year.
It's fiscal year, okay. That's my concern. I thought I heard you say school year, because my concern was what happens to that child in the summer months?
Yep, we, so it's a fiscal year, so all the students that are currently involved are being offered services throughout the summer. They may choose to opt out because maybe they're going to camp, they're leaving the state, but they will have access to us all summer.
And they would receive those services at the school?
We can receive, we can provide those services at the school.
Okay, thank you.
Any other from the members here?
Yeah, I want to better understand. Thank you. The school-based health clinic element of this, you said is co-location, or did I get that right?
We are co-locating currently and with this new, with, with what we're moving towards with Killingley right now in terms of our new contract, it's still a co-location because we didn't receive the, the grant funding to become a school-based health center. So it is, it's a, you know, it's a rigorous process, you know, there's, but it's, it was disappointing.
Yeah.
But, you know, I'm grateful for the partnership to be able to try to move this forward and still get access to these students.
You're embedded in the school
We are.
as an independent contractor
We are.
for that particular school.
We are.
Got it, thank you.
John McCain, noon in.
Oh, there you go. Ms. Olguvay, my name is Mike McCain, I'm the legal director for the State Department of Ed. I just have a few questions. I just actually wanna ask you to follow up on, on Mr. Clemmons' question. So is your testimony that the grant for, that CHR was recently seeking part and parcel of that was to transform your program into a school-based health center?
Correct.
And once it became a school-based health center, if you got the grant, would then the, the whole billing model change? Would the parents still be getting billed for copays and that sort of thing?
So in a school-based health center model, we still bill insurance. However, most of these, in most situations with a school-based health center, it's, the model's to no cost, so grant funding is used to offset any, any copays or co-insurance for if someone does not have insurance.
Okay.
That's sometimes, that is part of the beauty of having that model.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you. And, and do any of the students who see other families on Medicaid?
Yes.
Okay. Now, when you became involved with Killingley, did you do any background research as to why you're going there in the first place? In other words, why CHR was getting involved in the first place, like student needs, that sort of thing?
I mean, I-
Let, let me ask you about a question. Have you heard of the CIRAC report?
I have.
And I believe that was December 2021, the board, was first raised before the board by a member of the public in the March 2022 meeting. And so were you aware of what that survey found among the students? And would you agree those were fairly alarming results?
I would agree that it showed, it demonstrated a great need.
Okay. Do you know whether any of the current in-school student patients that CHR is currently working with, do you know whether they're previously being serviced in CHR community-based, by that I mean your offices, like at Danielson and other places? Do you know whether any of them were previously being serviced in your other offices?
Offhand, I would, without doing a record review, I, I couldn't say for sure.
Okay. So it's a possibility that these students who you are now working with, were students who previously had no such option?
Potentially.
Okay. And since you, you're, you're talking about 29 active cases in the intermediate schools, and I think you said 10 in the high school?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, I'm sorry. And then you said you've received calls from students, family of students at the Memorial School. And so I presume that's one of the reasons that you're looking to provide services there as well in the upcoming year?
Yes.
And have you, are you aware whether CHR has seen any uptake, uptick in student-age patients at its community-based offices? In other words, you're working with students in the, in the schools themselves, and since CHR has become integrated into Killingley and you're starting to see students, are you aware as to whether there has been a rise in students now that they're aware of you at your other offices as well?
We have individuals being seen at our Danielson Clinic and maybe a couple, like a couple that are in our Willemantic Clinic. So I would say, yes, we're seeing more families accessing us.
Okay. So your higher profile, so to speak, has led to other outlets for these students to avail themselves of. So in other words, they can't see them within the school, there is at least now, there seems to be a greater awareness of CHR, so they're being able to come, access your services in your other offices. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know whether chronic absenteeism is an issue with which CHR therapists work with students?
So can we see students who have chronic absenteeism?
Right.
Yes, we can.
And do you know whether that's one of the issues with students whom your, your therapists are seeing?
We have a few.
You do, okay, all right. Let me see. And I just wanna, just wanna make sure I understand, with the full-time employment, the FTEs, so my understanding is that you're foreseeing someone at the Memorial School for 40 hours, but 20 hours or so would be supervisory administrative functions and the other 20 hours would be direct services?
Correct.
Okay. How have you found the building level, I'm sorry, the building-level administrators? Have they been receptive?
According to my, I'd have to report it from my staff, like my staff's perspective, so it's not, it's third-party information, but my staff have, have reported to me that they have found everybody accessible and positive.
Okay. Because we had prior testimony that at least at some of the, a couple, one or two of the schools, the building-level administrators seem to be not, I'm trying to think of the best way to say this, but perhaps not sold on the whole concept. Have you found that at all?
I have not had any direct reports of that or experienced that myself.
Okay. Have you had to deal with any issues? In other words, have you had to get involved with any types of misunderstandings or miscommunications between CHR staff and the schools?
I have not.
Are you aware of any?
If there was, it was before my times, I have no idea.
Okay, but since you've been there?
Not since I've been there.
Since you've been there, okay. All right. So as you sit here today, that you're understanding then that going forward, and by that I mean starting the next school year, that you hope to have these full-time positions up and running?
Yes.
And is it also fair to say that if you're currently seeing 29 kids at the intermediate school, once this is up and running, you actually have the capacity to see even more students?
Yes, because what you have to recall about therapy is that it's not forever. And so as kids are making gains, we will transition them to bi-weekly, monthly, depending on what their clinical needs are. We may even discharge them if they no longer need us, if they've met their treatment goals, which then allows for more students to be seen.
Okay. And is there any type of transition once, and this is absolutely no criticism or derogation of the school-based staff, obviously, but I get the sense that the students who are coming to see you are perhaps have a greater level of need?
Yes.
So when your therapists are working these students and like you talk about, they could be discharged or transitioned, is there anything in place or is there any contemplation that they could be transitioned back to just to school-based social workers or school counselors?
Yeah, so every student and client of CHR, part of what we do right from the get-go at intake is we actually start talking about discharge with individuals. And the reason for that is because we want people to know that therapy's not supposed to be forever. So we're always examining what types of supports might need to be in place when that student is ready to, to move on from us. There's often a lot of, many of the models that we use in therapy also work with this. So we have different modules and things that we implement to help that student transition out of services and make sure they're connected to the appropriate, whether it's, it might still just be like the school social worker, or it could just be their family, it could be church, it can be a variety of different natural supports that are in this child's life that we're discharging to if they don't need ongoing therapy services. But it's an ongoing conversation. One thing to also, you know, and part of that happens every 90 days. We do treatment plan updates with the students and their parents every 90 days to look at their progress. And at that point in time, we're always still looking at what does this child need when they're ready to discharge from us? So it's always part of the conversation. Oh. So every 90 days, we do a treatment plan update.
And you would say during your direct examination that there are occasions when the school will talk to a family, and then they'll send you the referral and consent form, and then you never hear back from the families?
Correct.
But would it also be fair to say that there are occasions where the families are very communicative with you and appreciative of the services you're providing?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, I have nothing further, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And thank you for being here. Picking up on one of the last questions that Attorney McCain was asking you. You, you, you indicated that you wish you had gotten the grant to be a school-based health center. Do you plan to apply again for, for that grant?
We might. You know, obviously, that's gonna be a conversation between the Board of Ed and, and our agency. That's a collaborative process. Everybody needs to be on the same page. So if that is what continues at the discussion between the Board of Ed and Sue and myself, then that is what we'll proceed with.
And there's no, in other words, you don't wanna do anything without the permission of your client, the Killingley Board of Education?
Correct.
But if they were, if they were inclined to have you apply for a grant, would you have any reason to not apply?
I can't think of one.
You, you also, there was also some questioning about whether you, you were aware of any difficulty with, between staff members or building leadership and your, and your clinicians? And you said you, nobody's told you that, you, you, you have seen no evidence yourself.
Correct.
Do you have any evidence that your staff is really happy where they are? And if so, what is that?
I do. We have, so the clinicians that are currently involved with Killingley Public Schools are hopeful and with the new, with where we're going next to be able to apply for those full-time positions. So we have staff that have indicated that they would like to work, continue their work with Killingley Public Schools.
And in fact, those staff members are by name Jared Ripley, Azra Lupacino, and Meg, Megan Ryan, correct?
Correct.
The very people that are working there now are indicating, in fact, that they have no trouble with the Killingley system because they would like to spend more time there, correct?
Correct.
It is also correct that you didn't ask them to spend more time there. They came to you when they learned of the new agreement between your agency and Killingley and asked if they could spend more time there.
Correct.
And then, is it true that the day after that, that agreement between Killingley and CHR became public, it had a fourth staff member come to you and volunteer to go to Killingley?
Correct.
Would that permit the reasonable person to conclude that there are no problems between CHR staff members and school staff members?
Correct.
Just to be- Based on your experience in this field, would there be any disadvantage to the Killingley students who need services if they were required to switch to different clinicians with a different agency now?
Anytime there's disruption in the therapeutic process, it, it's never beneficial. You know, I think continuity of care is, is very important. Now, are there sometimes unforeseen transitions that happen? Yes. But knowing what some of the individuals that are seeking services are working on, you know, disrupting some of those individuals right now in their therapeutic process wouldn't, wouldn't be, especially if there wasn't a person to transition to right away, that would be detrimental.
One question I forgot to ask you about Meg Ryan. She's one of the, the three clinicians who works there now and wants to work more there. Does she have any training in addition to that which the others have that, that would be useful to Killingley students?
Yes, so Megan is currently trained in MATCH, which is, you know, it, it's basically 70% of students could benefit from getting MATCH. She is also recently trained in ASBRT, which is a substance abuse treatment model. So what that model does is it's screening, so it's screening the individual using two evidence-based and validated screener, so the SP2S, 2BI, and the craft screener. And from there, she's providing psychoeducation, motivational interviewing, doing brief intervention with the student, and, you know, around substance use. If that individual warrants a higher level of care, then part of that model is to then refer to the appropriate level of care.
One, one last question I wanted to ask you was the, the, the plan that you now have developed with Killingley calls for a total of 2.5 FTEs in the Killingley school system.
Correct.
And the previous plan, the current, the current contract you have is 1.0 FTEs. Is that right?
Our MOA actually says three days, so it was a point six, but we are out of, we're out of full FTE that we're providing at this time.
Okay. So it's fair to say that this new agreement that you have, I guess it about triples?
Correct.
what you previously had? All right. I don't have any other questions, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have just a quick question, Ms. Olguvay. Talking about transitions, since you have, the majority of them are at your intermediate school, I assume some of those students are now moving on to the high school?
Correct.
And that, will they have the same service personnel, or could that change?
So that would change, just like other districts- So that would change, just like other districts, when you have a person stationed there, you would be transitioning. But there, what, what I will say about that is that's a thoughtful process. So it's preparing the student, it's meeting with the other provider, ensuring that there's a warm handoff that happens to try to make sure there's seamless transition.
Okay, thank you.
I have one follow-up question. If this proposal is being worked on by the board, if that goes forward, is it your plan to operate as a school-based health center in, next year?
Next year, we would not be, we don't have school-based health center status. We'll still be co-locating, but providing...
Okay. And so the question really is, will it be at no cost to parents next year?
It will not be no cost to parents. We'll continue to bill insurance, parents will receive co-pay bills, there's ability to pay. If they have, if they're struggling to pay those bills, there are ways that we can work with the family on a sliding scale, looking at their financial needs.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Then you talked about a grant that would have subsidized or supplemented co-pays. What is, what's the other, kind of, what are the other elements of the payer mix for these students?
So right now, you know, a student could always be self-pay if they wanted to pay out of pocket, if they did not want to go and, you know, if they don't have insurance. It's Medicaid, it's, you know, private insurance. And then again, if, if the family says, hey, we, we are in a financial hardship, you know, we can look at setting a sliding scale fee based on their income to reduce the cost to the family.
Okay. And my second question is, I want to better understand, Ms. Ogilvy, the relationship between CHR and the school district as it relates to applying for grants. So is it, is it my understanding that you all cannot apply for grants independent of the school system?
Correct. So if we're applying, I mean, if we're applying for school-based health in particular, we need to have the school on board with it. So that April 10th meeting that was brought up earlier, we got the board's approval to apply, because we need a letter of, basically, a letter from the school basically saying they're on board.
Is this statute to this district, or is that just...
That's in totality.
Totality, gotcha.
So anytime you go for a school-based health center grant, you must have the school's backing.
I'm saying, okay.
And we also need community partners. So it's not just the school we need backing from. We need backing from other entities like United Way or the Eastern Community Coalition. Like, there's all these different entities, Joe Courtney, like, anyone can back us. And we're looking for people who are typically within that, in that area.
Yeah. And who at the school district has the capacity to understand the grants and validate the grants as you would?
So we've, we've worked with Sue, we've worked with...
Who's Sue?
Sue, sorry, Sue Nash and the Board of Ed.
Okay, thank you. Wow. This question outside the scope of the redirect, but I come in peace, so I'm sure it won't be objected to. You indicated, Ms. Ogilvy, early on in response to a direct examination question, that you actually, see, by you, I mean CHR, works in a co-location model in other school districts?
We do.
And is the extent of your presence in these other districts comparable to what you're, you're looking to do in Killingley next year?
Yes.
Okay. And do you find, and of course, every child's an individual, like we all are individuals, and we all have different needs, but would it be fair to say that you, you've been finding in Killingley some of the same issues that you found in these other districts?
Yes.
Okay. And in your work in these prior, these other districts, your prior work, from your opinion and from your perspective, have you found that to be a positive factor in those districts?
Can you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Oh, good God.
Sorry.
It's okay. That's what I get for asking involved questions. I'm just, you've been working in other districts.
Correct.
And would you characterize your efforts in those other districts as having had a positive effect upon students in those districts?
Yes.
And are you seeing a similar positive effect in Killingley?
Yes.
You know, we've heard prior testimony that the Killingley area was kind of a, I can't remember the exact term, but it was basically like a therapeutic desert. And so this is something that's, that's addressing that, that lack. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay. And you indicated during Thompson, which is up, I know, in the same neck of the woods as Killingley. And are you, do you have a robust presence in Thompson that you plan to have in Killingley?
We do not.
Okay. But you've, but you, you have the similar co-location services, just maybe not to the same extent?
Correct.
Okay. And how long, do you know how long CHR has been there?
I do not, offhand.
Okay. But they were there, but when you, when you joined CHR, they were there?
Correct.
Okay. And to the best of your understanding, will you continue to be there during the next school year as well?
We will.
All right. Thank you. I have nothing further. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes?
If I may?
Yes, Chris.
You mentioned that sort of the way the process works, you're not able to apply for the grant that would permit you, you to become a school-based health center next year?
Correct.
Correct. But are you able to apply for the same grant you applied for earlier this year?
Yes, we can apply again when it's posted.
Okay. You also mentioned that Husky is, in Connecticut, provides the lowest benefits in the entire country. Can, can CHR change that?
CHR can only advocate...
And am I correct that it's only the Connecticut legislature that can change that?
Correct. I'm not aware. I don't know.
Fair enough. Maybe we all need to write our legislators.
Yes, please.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you very much.
Region.
I thought someone said the country, sorry.
Ms. Ogilvy, if, once you have this new expanded program up and running, if individuals from, let's say, the State Department of Education were just to come and, you know, check in on Killingley on occasion, would you be open to working with them and just communicating with them?
Yes.
Okay. So, okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
So I guess, Mr. Noonan, the question is, when do, I know they voted on this plan, but when do we see this going? Like, where are we going to go from here? I guess that's the question.
That's a good question. I've already talked with Attorney Feinstein and Attorney McKeon about this. We do have a plan that needs to be finalized. Wait, we have drafts. Unfortunately, it's not Ms. Ogilvy who, who has the final say. It's, it's the higher-ups in her company. They're in the process of finalizing their year, which is sort of for the whole organization, which doesn't allow them to, to help us at the moment. But we think we'll have a draft ready to share with these two folks in around two weeks.
Okay.
And then, and frankly, it's what we're hoping, it will be essentially the same as the agreement that got rejected for the grant. And it's, and basically, it's Killingley taking other money and paying for it. But we, you know, talking with everybody, we, we really think that this is, this is going to do it. They already, they've already voted the money for it. And by the way, I, you know, one of the things I want to mention, right, because I think it's important to understand, the vote in favor of this plan was nine, nothing.
That's very good to hear.
And I think that, I think it reflects very well on the experience that they've had with CHR. I mean, there is no one on that board at this point, and no one in the administration, who has any doubts about CHR and these providers who want to devote more of their time there, that that's good for their children. And I have to say, it was at the meeting of the Killingley Board, I was really impressed with them. There were things, not this, but there were things where there were disagreements, but that's democracy. And they, but they were really considerate to one another, they expressed their views as they should. And, and in the executive session, it was, the integrity was really, really helpful. And I think that bodes well for this kind of program going forward.
Thank you for that. Want to give him back his mic?
From the point of view of my clients, this is a massive victory for the students of Killingley. And it would be our intention, if this, you know, works out as, as it looks like it's going to work out, that we would file some piece of paper withdrawing our request for a 10-4B hearing. My question to this panel is, do we come back and present it to you, or do we just do it on the papers?
Good question. And that would probably be a question I'm going to toss over to Attorney General Cunningham, because we also have that same, as we're finally getting to higher ground here, have that same question. Darren, are you still with us?
I am. I, I think you'd probably want to hear my comments privately, right?
Okay.
Before, before you do, let me just state on behalf of the CSDE that, as I believe the board members know, I, I'm the individual who did the investigation into this 10-4B complaint, and I'm the one who drafted the investigatory report. And so I would have to concur with my, my colleagues that the proposed provision of 2.5 full-time equivalent therapeutic services in three schools with, with respect to the new school year, beginning with the new school year, is light years away from what I believe the report referred to the seemingly deliberate indifference that we uncovered, or I uncovered in my prior report and investigation. So this is extremely hardening to the CSDE. Needless to say, the CSDE has to discuss internally what the next steps would be predicated upon the agreement that will hopefully be drafted and provided to us. But at this point, we have a very positive outlook. I hate to drag people here unnecessarily, but I, I think, given that we have had so many days of formal hearing, it would perhaps make sense to make this presentation to the panel in person, so that if you have any questions, you could ask them of us. And we have established so much on the record in the form of so much evidence, so many exhibits, so much testimony, that it would seem to me, to complete the record, it would make sense to also present any proposed resolution to the panel orally as well. And I'm sure you're sitting there and thinking, well, you know, I, I think everyone probably is thinking it would be easier just to submit it in, in writing, and I really don't want to take people away from their summer vacations or what have you. But personally, I just think, I think this would be very brief, but I, I think it would probably make sense just to sort of close the loop and, and also have a concluding presentation on the record as well.
I tend to agree with that. If A.J. Cunningham has, we'll, we'll obviously talk with him about it before, but I do think, I mean, we've had seven months of hearings, we waited a year to get to those hearings. Our only ask is that, I hope when I say higher ground, that we are there prior to the start of this school year. Our hopes was, you know, when we started this whole investigation was that it would happen, and we've seen Killingley and the students of Killingley not getting that for an entire school year. So that I would guess is our, as a panel would agree, that, that is certainly our ask.
I would totally concur. The CSD is absolutely in agreement with that. This has gone on for quite a while. But the good news is, after this long process, and thanks to it all being initiated in the first place by these concerned citizens and residents of Killingley, it would appear that the students of Killingley are finally getting what they needed for so long.
Yes, it does appear so.
And we would very much like this to be resolved before the beginning of the school year, absolutely.
Good. And I do appreciate your question to Ms. Ogilvy about her thoughts about having the CSD staff coming into Killingley and that being affirmative. So that's common practice, that staff from the Connecticut Department of Education goes into Killingley, and I think that's very important, that, that would occur, and I would imagine would occur.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, no, sorry. Just in light of the panels' expressed views and everything, I feel comfortable speaking at least a little bit. I think it makes sense, if everyone agrees that we'll have a further demonstration about the status, maybe in about a month's time, sometime in July. Obviously, we can work with the parties on the appropriate date.
I, I also agree. I think it makes purpose sense, and frankly, I think it's fair to the panel. You folks have dealt with this a long time, and I think you ought to be involved in the conclusion, what I'm really hoping is a happy conclusion for everyone.
I want to add one more factor there on behalf of the students of Killingley. Due to the divisive nature of this, due to the publicity about this, Killingley's had a hard time attracting staff. We've got to do something to rehabilitate the reputation of Killingley School Systems. And if we come back together and demonstrate not only we have an agreement on this, but the Killingley is really in the lead in terms of providing mental health services to students, I think that, that can help provide the type of recruiting and high-level staff that Killingley Schools need going forward.
Agreed. One thing I wanted to mention, I think you all saw Superintendent Nash here, and she had to leave. I don't know if everyone realizes this, but today is the day of the high school graduation. So she needed to be back there by noon. So I didn't want anyone to think that she was being impolite, or she doesn't care. Believe me, she cares about this. And, and it was her and her assistant superintendent who worked their rear ends off to deal with the funding aspect. And I'm sure all of you realize that was not easy, but they did it, and they did a wonderful job. And again, most importantly, they, they now have a unified board behind them, and that's just spectacular to see. And thank all of you for your time.
Thank you. Nothing else from anybody? Okay, meeting is adjourned.